I believe we need to call the roll again.
Yes. Mr. Bracken?
Here.
Ms. Franklin?
Here.
Ms. French?
Here.
Mr. Pretherton?
Here.
Ms. Ragoo?
Here.
Mr. Smith?
Here.
Mayor Snably?
Here. I would invite all those who would like to pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much. Can I have a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any changes? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Agenda is approved. We'll move to public participation. At this time, anyone wishing to address council on items that are not on tonight's agenda, or if they are on the consent agenda, you could come forward at this time and state your name and address for the record, and we'll give you, unlike a lot of places only give you three minutes, at council, we give you five. But at the end of five, we'll cut you off. Okay. Yeah, please do.
Holly Hansel and I live at forty-two twenty-six Main Street in Dart Town.
Tim Schiller, one-eighteen Hilltop.
Chris Winkler, fifty-six fifty Brown Road.
I'm going to speak on our behalf tonight. We're here to share some information with you about the Talawanda Alumni Hall of Achievement. This is an organization that was dreamt up all the way back in 2017, and in 2018, we started to make it official, started putting a board together. We are independent of the school district. It's a 501(c)(3), and the purpose of the organization is to recognize outstanding achievements from alumni from Talawanda High School outside of the area of athletics, I should add that. And also, we were very interested in establishing a scholarship that will go to a senior.
What's the scholarship name?
Talawanda Alumni Hall of Achievement's Promise Scholarship.
Promise Scholarship.
That's a mouthful.
So, listen, like many things, we were stalled during COVID, but we've been back in action for the last year. We've done some fundraising. We have some money in our scholarship fund, and we're getting ready to host our very first recognition event of alumni, and that's going to take place on February nineteenth. We're going to host that event at Hanover Reserve at six-thirty in the evening. We are beginning to market that event now, but I'd like to share publicly for the first time, this will be shared with some other organizations, the honorees. Tanya Tool from the class of nineteen fifty-eight, Timothy Derrickson from the class of nineteen seventy-eight, Sean McLean from the class of nineteen eighty-five, Benjamin Bolser from the class of nation with Seth Crokenbaker today, who I think is going to get that into your notes, and we'll send some other materials up to the city building, but we just wanted to make a public announcement here.
Thank you very much for coming.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. All right. Is there anyone else who'd like to address council? Yeah, come on up, give us your name and where you live.
My name's Joe Hansbauer, and I actually live in Newport, Kentucky, but I am here today visiting with you from Habitat for Humanity, and I just wanted to provide a quick update. We will be breaking ground in early 2024 on the nineteenth and twentieth homes that we'll build on Fuller and Carter Way, which I think will bring us to a total of twenty-eight houses over about the last ten years. We love being here at Oxford, so that'll be our last two locations on our current property that we own over there, and we are excited to find the next opportunity, wherever it may be. We are certainly supportive of the council and all the work that you're doing to talk about affordable housing, and I think at Habitat, we like to talk about housing that's affordable, and that's what we're all about. So, thank you for your time here tonight.
Thank you very much. I've been to several ribbon cuttings for Habitat, and I'm really proud of the work that Habitat's done in our community, so thank you for keeping Oxford in your focus. Appreciate it.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Excuse my raspiness.
I do.
It's my sexy voice. I'm Vanessa Cummings, one-twenty-five Marty Court in Oxford, and I just wanted to address the issues that you all talked about in your work session tonight. Having been on the YWCA Board several years ago and still working coordination with the YWCA and other capacities that I serve in the community and in the county, the work that they do is excellent, the housing that they provide is excellent, the design doesn't actually look like a hotel when you see it in person. It looked like something similar to what they built in Hamilton in their new facility, but they do provide very good supportive housing, and I think it's important that we have that. And I understand the need for moderate to low-cost housing. I concur with you all that Cristo's not the way to go because that's not reasonable-priced housing for people who are in need of housing in this community, and it's just, that's a big issue for me. I'm the person who was on council years ago and started the Housing Advisory Commission to address the need for moderate to low-cost housing. So I see this as finally seeing some things happen on what I was envisioning a few years ago, back in my teenage days. So I just think that you all, I support the YWCA plan. If you decide to go with Habitat, I support that as well, but I think the WISE program would be great, and I think it's worth having a conversation to say, maybe part of this would be to address the need for housing beyond just those dealing with domestic violence, if the capacity would withstand that, because the housing's needed, and they do great work. They provide supportive services. They provide a full community. They have very strict guidelines that they go by. They have a strict application process that's required for people to get into housing. I assisted someone with getting into housing there when they were building the new facility. So I just wanted to say that I think what they're doing is great. I think what they propose is going to be good for this community, and based on what you were sharing, it's meeting the needs that the community said we need to address. And if people get stuck in their NIMBY mindset, they need to realize that people who are suffering domestic violence look like every walk of life, and they come from every race, every color, every orientation. They come from all types of income levels, so we don't need to stereotype and start thinking something, because as Amber stated earlier, what happens in communities is that people tend to stop taking care of communities when people move in. I lived in a community when I was down south, and they started changing part of it to Section Eight housing, and what happened is the landlords stopped taking care of the property. They stopped cutting the grass. They stopped painting the buildings. They left all of that up to the people that were living there so that the quality goes down, and then you say, that's what happens when they come in. It's not the people that moved in, it's the people who own the property who become slumlords, so to speak. With all due respect, they don't maintain the properties as well as they should in some instances. Others do excellent work and take great care of the property because it's about maintaining the quality of life for everybody. So I just wanted to share that I think it's great that this is happening, I'm grateful that this property's there, and we need to use it to serve the needs in this community. Domestic violence victims definitely need that, families need that, and the YWCA, if you're going to partner, they're one of the best organizations, at least in this area, that you can partner with, and I say that from my own personal experience working on their board and watching the work that they do and being associated with people who are receiving services through them and from them. So I just wanted to share that, so I commend you all on doing this.
Thank you, Vanessa. We appreciate it. Hi, John.
Good evening, Councilor.
Welcome.
What's happening? I'm John Relonowski, Three P Body Drive in Oxford. Just wanted to speak briefly in favor of the Oxford Area Trail, which will be a great benefit, I believe, to the city of Oxford, to really improve the quality of life. I know there's been a little bit of pushback, but as an anecdote, I was in Yellow Springs, which was on the Little Miami Trail, and was there about nineteen eighty-seven, eighty-eight, and before the trail went in, and there were people against the trail there. And Yellow Springs has benefited immensely from having that in town. And as a transportation tangent, I would really like the city and the school board to work out the Nelson Morrow Building, so if you could work on that, that'd be great. All right, thank you.
Thank you. As a side note, I think Jessica works on that pretty much every day. Just a naughty problem. Anyone else wishing to address council at this time? Okay. Thank you very much. We appreciate all of you coming and sharing with us, and we will move then to the consent agenda, and I would entertain a motion to approve it.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Are there any items to be removed? Hearing none, all those in favor of approving the consent agenda say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. The consent agenda is approved. We'll move to resolutions. You can read the first one.
A resolution approving the contract between the City of Oxford, Ohio, and the non-commissioned Police Division employees, and authorizing the city manager to sign a contract on behalf of the city.
Okay, is there a motion to adopt this resolution?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, and who's going to talk about it?
Doug. Yeah. So the non-commissioned Police Division Employees Labor Agreement expires at the end of this year. The agreement included a wage increase of three percent in 2024. Other police contracts we recently negotiated include a four-and-a-half percent increase for patrol officers and a four percent increase for sergeants and lieutenants in both 2024 and 2025 respectively. Staff and I are proposing a new three-year agreement from one-one-twenty-four to twelve-thirty-one-twenty-six, so basically adding two additional years with the non-commissioned Police Division employees with a four percent wage increase for all three years. This proposed agreement would also include replacing the outdated maternity leave in their contract with the standard paid parental leave and the longevity rates in the current salary ordinance. So in accepting this agreement, we would avoid the cost of negotiating a new three-year agreement, and the union has agreed to this proposal as well, so I would recommend approval.
Thank you very much.
Oh, one thing I wanted to add, thank you. I knew you were looking at me for one reason. On pages forty-nine to fifty-two, these are the actual TAs that should not be included with the agreement, so I would suggest that we pass a motion to exclude pages forty-nine to fifty-two. They're not part of the agreement.
Thank you very much. I'm going to get to public in a second, but I think before we lose this, let's have that motion.
Yes, I would move as a friendly amendment to the motion that the record strikes from pages forty-nine through fifty-two of the.
Is there objection to that change? Hearing no objection, I will accept it as a friendly amendment.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. If there were objections, then we would discuss it and vote on it. Now, is there anyone from the public who would like to address this resolution? Okay, thank you very much. And councilors, any comments or concerns? Okay. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Resolution is adopted, minus pages forty-nine and fifty-two, and we'll read number B.
A resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into a new agreement with Milford Township, Butler County, Ohio, and authorizing the City of Oxford to provide emergency medical services to the western portion of Milford Township pursuant to the agreement.
Okay, sir, a motion to adopt the resolution.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Doug, you want to talk about that?
I do indeed, thank you. It's awful loud, isn't it? Earlier this month, Jessica, John, and I met with representatives of Milford Township to discuss a new three-year agreement. The current three-year agreement expires at the end of 2024. The current agreement provides for a payment of $28,000 in fiscal year 2024 for EMS service in the western portion of Milford Township. So I provided a PowerPoint which calculated a new contract amount. That amount was $225,804, which was based on the 2024 fire EMS budget. The Milford Township official shared with us a plan to propose a replacement fire levy on the ballot in 2025, which if passed, would provide additional monies in 2026. So we then discussed a one-year agreement for fiscal year 2025 at $60,000. This amount is over double the contract amount for fiscal year 2024. It also provides a necessary time to propose a replacement fire EMS levy, property tax levy. So the Milford Township officials recognize the great service that we provide, and they want to pay their fair share and are willing to propose a replacement levy which would generate $225,000 per year. Thus, we reached this tentative agreement for a one-year contract for $60,000 for fiscal year 2024. I'd be glad to answer any questions you might have on that.
Thank you. Is there anyone from the public who would like to address this resolution? Okay, councilors?
Well, we've been saying, kind of read between the lines, we were very effusive in thanking Milford Township for negotiating, and just for context, where those people have been following the conversations, Oxford works with surrounding other jurisdictions to try to find a fair price for the fire and E M S services that the city provides to them, and that's the same with Milford and Oxford Township. What other townships?
Riley. Just Oxford and Milford.
Just Oxford and Milford Township.
We had mutual aid with some other townships.
And it's a negotiation to find a fair amount, and you know, just for the public, we're also, another jurisdiction in town is Miami University, which is a separate jurisdiction, and we're looking forward to conversations with them likewise about what a fair amount to contribute is, so.
I would just add that I appreciate that Miami University is having a conversation with us, and I remain optimistic that they will come forward with something that is also fair. Anyone else want to comment on that? Okay, are you ready to vote? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Resolution is adopted, and I think, I do want to take a moment to thank Milford Township for coming forward in this manner and dealing with it in a forthright way. They deserve a lot of credit, and they'll probably get pushback, but they are doing the right thing. We'll move to number C.
A resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into a contract with Jefferson Health Plan to assist with our self-insured health benefits program at a cost of $202,662 a month.
Okay, is there a motion to adopt the resolution?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Jessica?
Good evening. As you know, our health insurance costs have gone up a lot over the past few years, and so we have explored joining Jefferson Health Plan, which is a consortium-type model. We would be joining together with lots of other cities to mitigate our risk, and it's kind of like an even billing plan, so instead of us paying our own claims each month, come what they are, this would be, we pay the same amount every month, and then we pay out of their fund that we have there. They have over a hundred and eighty organizations that are part of this membership program. They're organized as a council of governments, was open to political, excuse me, political subdivisions within and outside the state of Ohio. They are a membership organization, and each organization has its own reserve balance, but yet we pay into that, and then they pay the claims out of that each month. We do anticipate a savings over what we spent this year. This year, we were at just over $3 million, and we're estimating about $2.4 million with their program model, so we hope to see some savings, and we would recommend adoption of this partnership.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone from the public who would like to address this resolution? Okay, councilors have any questions or comments? Okay. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. All right, the resolution's adopted, and we'll move to D.
A resolution authorizing the donation of $15,000 of American Rescue Plan funds to the Talawanda Oxford Pantry and Social Services to be used to provide a seasonal cold shelter.
Okay, is there a motion to adopt this resolution?
So moved.
Second.
And it's been seconded. Jessica?
Good evening again. For a few meetings now, we have been talking about how to do a cold shelter, and I had said to you, we need a nonprofit to facilitate it, and we had begun exploring different options, calling different nonprofits, and then TOPPS wrote me a letter, and they said, you know what, we'd like to do this, we're going to work together with the Family Resource Center. I did call back and confirm TOPPS will be the fiscal agent. They do intend to merge together and anticipate doing that in the next few months, but they're not quite yet, but TOPPS will be the fiscal agent, partner with Family Resource Center to operate a cold shelter through the end of February, and this is what I would recommend.
Okay, and do you know where that will be?
I do believe it will be at a hotel, so they will pay for hotel stays and then try to offer services to help people find more permanent housing through their case management services that they provide.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone from the public who would like to address this one, this resolution? Excuse me. Counselors, any questions or comments?
Yeah. We were originally talking about $50,000, I believe. Is this enough and sufficient?
This is, the letter they wrote me was for this much, and so this is what I brought before you.
Okay.
Well, I appreciate TOPPS stepping up, working with F R C to get this done, and yeah.
We couldn't do this alone. I mean, we have some funding, but we don't have the staff capacity or the expertise, and so these are one of these relationships where we partner, we can do it, so thank you to TOPPS.
Okay. With no further discussion, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Resolution is adopted. It's a good move, and we're hopeful that TOPPS can make it work this year. Ordinance is first reading. On first reading, we do not take a vote, but we have discussion, and we will begin number one.
An ordinance limiting the number of non-medical cannabis dispensary license to two in the City of Oxford and designating the location for these two non-medical cannabis dispensaries.
Okay, Doug?
Yes, so a majority of Ohio voters approved issue two, fifty-seven percent, as a matter of fact, on the November 2023 ballot to legalize the possession and use of marijuana by individuals aged 21 and over. In Oxford, issue two passed with sixty-eight percent voting yes and thirty-two percent voting no. The initiated statute became effective December seventh, 2023. However, it may be amended by the state legislature, as you know. The newly created Division of Cannabis Control within the Ohio Department of Commerce has nine months to complete rulemaking and licensing processes for non-medical cannabis. Sales of non-medical cannabis may not begin until licenses are issued and facilities are certified, so this proposed ordinance would limit the number of non-medical cannabis dispensaries in Oxford to two, and states that the locations will be at the current existing medical marijuana dispensaries. Under the initiated statute, medical marijuana facilities will receive a non-medical marijuana dispensary license. Both locations have expressed interest in the recreational cannabis dispensary license, and then if either business chooses not to accept this license, then council can determine another location outside the Uptown Business District. So if you're aware, we have one located on US twenty-seven South and one currently located on US twenty-seven North, and I did speak with the owners and managers of both, and they are interested, so I would recommend passage of this. As you know, several communities in Butler County, Hamilton and Fairfield, have passed moratoriums. In a way, this is somewhat symbolic because we've got a period of time before they're going to issue their regulations, but I think it'd be helpful to let the public know that we're only going to permit two, and these are the locations. You know, it might prevent investors from maybe coming in thinking that we're a wide-open market, which we're not going to be, at least what I'm proposing to city council.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone from the public who would like to address this ordinance? Counselor? Any comments, questions? Go ahead.
Yeah, I have mixed feelings about it. I mean, I feel like this is one of those situations where we have other states and cities that have had legal marijuana for a lot longer than us, and just curious what happens over there, and depending on which source you look at, it might say, there are actually a lot of Realtor organizations that say that it actually raised home prices, which in their, on their side, they think that's a good thing. I feel like that's a bad thing, so as far as the more cannabis dispensaries you have, it actually raises your home prices, and that's a lot of studies coming out of Colorado. Some of the other things they said were increased hospitalization for marijuana goes up the more dispensaries you have. Others will say there's actually less opioid overdoses if you have more dispensaries, which makes sense, and kind of hit or miss as far as how much it trickles down to the youth, which I feel like is the biggest concern. When it passed, I thought, man, we have so many shops, I wonder what that could do for the city, you know? It was kind of like a, I don't know if this is like a generation of income kind of thing, some type of boon, so I thought it was important to try to find the most balanced, something that uses all these different papers that are coming out and gives advice to local governments, and so some of the things they said, I thought this was really interesting. This is from icma.org, and they have a very, they don't tell you which way to go, they just tell you what's out there, but I thought this was good advice. When I think about the companies in town that have liquor licenses that basically hold a monopoly, right, whenever we try to have a place that wants to have a brewery, and it might be a little bit more challenging, or we have a restaurant like Scotty's that wanted to have a brewery, and they, I don't know what all happened with that, but I just think about, monopolies are never good, but I can understand the desire to pass this, but I thought this was interesting, and I'll just read this. It says regularly monitor indicators and review your regulations. This is a new industry that will continue to experience growing pains, especially as the state and federal contexts continue to shift. While states and local governments adopting early legislation are beginning to generate data, figures should still be considered preliminary. Even in states where legalization passed several years earlier, businesses are just starting to open, following long processes to develop regulations and process applications, and local leaders are standing by to watch for indications that the industry needs more or less regulation. So I quote, one California city manager said, "Start early and walk a slow path," which I feel like this is what it is, a sentiment echoed by many of his peer actions. Beware of doors that are difficult to close once opened. Consider sunset provisions or temporary caps as ways to test your local market, and assure residents that you will continue to revisit regulations and make adjustments as necessary." So I think that, you know, this makes complete sense to do, and just making sure that we're kind of, you know, we're flexible to adjust depending on what information is coming out so that we don't create little monopoly monsters maybe in town, and that maybe that won't be such a good thing down the road. Yeah.
Can I ask why, I mean, was two, just, well, those are the two incumbents we have, and just shutting the door behind that?
Yeah.
Okay.
I mean, that was my thought, and I needed to share it with council, because, you know, like I said, there are obviously some people in town that are opposed that didn't vote to approve this, and as we all know, it's kind of like alcohol and cigarettes. I mean, they're not good for you either. I mean, there's some, probably some good things that can happen for some people with marijuana, but there's also some harmful effects, so that's kind of my thinking with limiting it to two, but you know, if we later on wanted to have several more, I felt, you know, since we passed the moratorium on vape shops, we really didn't want any in the downtown area. We want to encourage more, you know, boutique shops, other kind of stores and restaurants and so on and so forth, so that was my thinking there.
So I guess I would just say that I think with the logic of going slow is a good idea. I'm hesitant about the idea that you lock in these incumbents in a monopoly of two, you know? If you follow the spirit of the issue, which was, I think, titled like, "Regulate marijuana like alcohol," we do definitely have more than one vendor of alcohol in town, and I'm not saying that we should, I guess what I'm saying, if we go into this, I hope that we take a slow but also nuanced point of view, because one could argue, you know, I'm not saying we should make this easy to walk to, but both of these are locations that are far from, you know, where the most of our population is, they're driving locations, and so if it's a legal thing, I'm not sure I necessarily. And so I, if it's a legal thing, I'm not sure I necessarily want to regulate it such that it's more inaccessible than other things would be. So I think two is fine right now, but I guess what I'm just saying is let's, let's maintain an open mind about how we want to do this. I think closing the door now prevents a gold rush, but, but let's not just mean that it's two forever and evermore, because I could imagine some other number that could be reasonable and they could be distributed in convenient locations in our community if again, we, if it's a legal product, you know, we could regulate it like we.
Yeah. The point I need to, to make clear, you know, I mentioned it in my reading, but the initiated statute entitles those with a medical dispensary license for a recreational license. And if you try to deny that, they can put it on the ballot, a local ballot and have the voters vote on it. And I didn't want to, you know, do that, if you will. So since they're entitled to one and we have two.
Yeah.
You know, I felt that it made a lot of sense. Now, this could change. As you know, the senate proposed some changes. I mean, they, there's one bill that wanted to reduce the number of plants you could have at home to six, period. The initiated statute allows an individual to have six, a household to have another six for a total of 12. They wanted to reduce the potency in another bill and they also wanted to change the distribution of the tax. The current initiated statute provides for a 10% tax. And it also includes the sales tax, which is six and a half in Butler County. And of that 10% tax, the way it's written, 36% would go to the host community, the municipal corporation. So, you know, we would have a revenue source there, but that could all be changed.
Columbus might very well do.
Columbus, you know, I, I am encouraged by the house because they got the senate bill and they said, whoa, wait a minute, we're gonna, we're gonna take some time here. Now, what they come up with, I don't know. I mean, there, there are one bill, which is House Bill 354. Seems like it's not going to change a lot of things, but you know, there's still a lot of time for the legislature to, to, to make changes.
Well, I think we can all agree that we're starting slow and careful and I think that's the place to start and, and we're flexible. Like, like Dave said, we need to keep an open mind.
And I know this doesn't mention it, but I guess would we consider having local licensing fees on top of the tax?
I'd have to check in this statute, but I don't know that we can add, I know we can't add any more tax to it, but I'm, I'm not sure about that question. Do you know, Chris?
I, I don't either. I mean, you know, it's really an interesting process because I, I had a conversation with the CEO of a cultivator who came in Green County. And I asked him at one point, how do you set the price? And his answer was the street sets the price. So just because it's legal doesn't mean there's going to be, there will still continue to be illicit trade. And I, I think that that's one, another factor to go slowly too. So I don't know, Doug, again, I'm just kind of, I've read it. I didn't retain it all, noticed that there was a light, a right for, to take to the ballot by individuals and that the cultivators, I mean, the current distributors have enhanced status, but that could change too. So let's just monitor and see what happens.
And to that point, that is something that is mentioned in a lot of papers, that it actually reduces the illicit trade, the more dispensaries there are, because there's more competition. So the prices are actually outcompeting the street or close enough. So.
Well, I'm talking to one of the owners. She mentioned, I think it was Illinois, which has a very high tax. And basically she feels a lot of people are going to Michigan, I believe, because, you know, you're defeating the purpose if you want to, you know, reduce the illicit trade if you have a very high tax. I mean, we're going to have 10% plus six and a half, so that's 16 and a half percent. So, you know, at what point does it encourage people to continue the illicit trade? I don't know.
Okay. Any further discussion? All right. This will come back to us at second reading and we can vote on it. You can read number two.
An ordinance to amend ordinance number 3689, regulating the rates and charges to be charged and collected and the services to be rendered by Glenwood Energy of Oxford Incorporated, its successors and assigns for gas and gas services furnished to all the customers within the corporate limits of the city of Oxford during the period ending October 31st, 2025 by authorizing Glenwood Energy of Oxford Incorporated to add a city border station upgrade rider.
Okay. Thank you very much, Doug.
Yes. So we received a letter on July 31st of this year from Glenwood Energy regarding upgrades to the Oxford City Border Station. It's located on US 27 South. If you, I think that's just north of, of University Park Boulevard, but on the other side of the street, there's some big piping there and that's where Duke Energy Natural Gas comes in and that's where Glenwood Energy gets all the gas that's distributed in the city of Oxford. So they sent us a follow-up letter in November with estimated project costs. The estimated costs to the city are $225,061. Glenwood Energy is seeking a special rider to recover these costs. The rider is based on a three-year average annual throughput of 382,494 MCF. The proposed two-year special rider would be basically 29.42 cents per MCF. Glenwood Energy will provide periodic semi-annual updates and true up with this new rider to the city. Basically what we're saying there is that when they recover all their costs, that rider will be eliminated. So this legislation for the two-year special rider will amend ordinance number 3689, which established the rates and charges rendered by Glenwood Energy for providing natural gas service in the city of Oxford. Glenwood Energy will also make adjustments to the percent of income payment plan, PIP, uncollectible expense and the utility pipeline tax riders, which are subject to PUCO jurisdiction and regulation. The total of these three rider adjustments would increase from 0.3007 to 0.3252 per MCF, basically an 8.15% increase, 8.15% increase, excuse me. The total impact of these changes for a consumer utilizing 100 MCF of natural gas is $31.97 per year or $2.67 per month. In Oxford, according to the 2017-2022 American Community Survey, there are 6,170 occupied housing units and of those, 3,069 units with a margin of error of 482 plus or minus used utility gas, which is natural gas for home heating. I'd be glad to answer any questions you have.
Okay. Thank you, Doug.
Yeah.
Is there anyone from the public who'd like to address this ordinance? Okay. Counselors?
What are the consequences if we say no to this?
Thank you for asking.
Well, they have the right then to go to PUCO. So that's in our current regulation if we don't agree. So.
Do we know the likely outcome of that?
They would get it. You know, basically what you have with utilities is basically they have the right to recover their expenses and basically earn a rate of return on their investment. So the rate of return we deal with during the, the rate setting ordinance that we'll be doing in another year. So I might share with you, when we, we used to have Barth Royer that reviewed this information for us and provided a recommendation. He passed away a couple of years ago and then we used another law firm, but I did the research for this. You know, I used to work with the utility company. I'm somewhat familiar with it and they provided all the backup information, but it's, they're entitled to recover their expenses under the rate setting regulations and, and we follow those regulations. I mentioned the three riders and they're written as such that PUCO has jurisdiction over those. We were going to include those in it, but we decided to keep the current language where PUCO is responsible for reviewing those. But the bottom line is they have an investment they make. This rider will allow them to recover those expenses and once they recover, it goes off.
So there's a sunset on it?
Yeah. Now, we wrote this such that this current energy ordinance that we have, rate ordinance we have with them will expire probably before they recover all these. And that's why I didn't put the same date in as the general rate ordinance that will expire. So that will entitle them to continue that rider for, you know, a few months, maybe six months under the new legislation that we'll be bringing in probably late this year.
So do we know how long?
Late next year.
How long this will run until they have paid it off?
It's expected to be two years.
Two years?
Yeah. And they did give us a figure for a three-year and, but I'm recommending the two-year to city council.
All right. Any other questions, comments? Okay. Thank you very much. And that will come up at our next meeting and we'll move to second readings.
An ordinance amending ordinance number 3697, supplemental budget ordinance number eight, to make supplemental appropriations for fiscal year 2023.
Okay. Is there a motion to adopt?
No. Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Heidi, welcome.
Good evening. There was one change. We had to add some additional funding to the health insurance. And the, the original was 390,000. Now we're asking for 478,000, an addition, additional $88,000, just to get us through the NBI with our fines.
Okay. And that's for insurance?
Health insurance.
Okay.
It's an employee benefit fund.
All right. Thank you very much. Is there anyone from the public who would like to address this ordinance? Counselors? Any questions? Nope. Let's wrap it up. Let's call it.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Franklin?
Yes.
Ms. French?
Yes.
Mr. Prethard?
Yes.
Ms. Ragoo?
Yes.
Mr. Bracken?
Yes.
Ms. Navy?
Yes. Ordinance is adopted and will move to announcements and communications.
So the only thing I have for you this evening is just this afternoon, I received an electronic letter from EPA where they approved our chapter 513 application for our solar project on the closed municipal landfill. So that's good news. They'll be moving into the, at some point, submittal of the construction plans and for the project. They have until the end of, no, not the end, it's like September of next year to exercise their option to lease, which I expect that they'll be doing sometime spring of next year. And that's all I have.
Okay.
If they do not, can you tell us what happens then? I presume they are, but.
Yeah, I presume they are too. That'd be up to us if they don't exercise the lease. I mean, you know, yeah, I'm not.
Could advertise it out again.
Yeah, they've, they've invested a lot of money and they're, they're really intent on, on doing this project, so.
Okay. Thank you. Michael?
Nothing tonight, thanks.
Okay. CJ?
Nothing.
Heidi?
Nothing.
Chief DeTherid?
Okay.
Casey?
Happy holidays.
Happy holidays. I missed everybody talking about how great the winter festival went and at the last meeting, but a lot of people gave you kudos.
Thank you.
All right. Sam?
Just wanted to let the public know that we have one vacancy on planning commission. If there's any citizens interested in serving, we've got an application online for that. And we will have three vacancies on border zoning appeals coming later in 2024 and two in the Historic and Architectural Preservation Commission. So a good opportunity to learn more about design review and planning and zoning.
Okay. Thank you very much. Hope that people who are watching this and people who are sitting here who might be interested will take that to heart. We need some good applicants for each of those very important commissions. Hi, Jessica.
You guys, my favorite time of year is coming up. Goal-setting time. So just a heads up that our council retreat, we're trying to get it scheduled. I will be sending out the results of our 2023 action items and our progress toward our goals. And then what I'll do is I'll also just send out what you gave us from our last retreat to start planning for in '24 and what we built into the budget. So I'll provide you with that information of what's already in the budget and what's already being planned. And then I invite you, counselors, to come back to us with ideas for new things for '24, what I like to call the squeeze and pivot. And then also ideas that you want us to start planning and researching for 2025 that will then be built into the budget process that begins as early as May and June. And with also happy holidays.
Thank you, Jessica. Appreciate it. Heather?
Nothing, thank you.
Chris?
I don't have anything, thanks.
Mike?
Enjoy the free parking and do your shopping uptown. Happy holidays.
Good message.
Hardly agree. Happy holidays.
Shantel?
The Board of Trustees meeting with Miami was on Friday and some of the people here were in the audience. It went, it was as crowded as you could imagine it happening at 9:00 AM on a business day on Friday morning, which I don't think is meant to be super accessible. But the point being that I don't even know if the trustees know that this is a problem. So I, they seemed like they were, they all had poker faces and they all seemed kind of curious about it. So I'm curious to know how much has been shared with them so far. They, I do think that the big question is what is the liability if one of their students gets hurt if we do not have appropriate firing EMS available to them, especially given the situation about funding and equity of how the funds are being shared. So when y'all do have the meeting, I do think it would be important to ask them about how they feel about liability for their students.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Just want to say happy holiday and to say how grateful I am for everyone I've worked with and continue to work with here on council and with city staff. I also want to say, I say this all the time, that, that hope is not just a feeling, it's a discipline, it's a practice. And we have a lot of work to do as a country in 2024. There is going to be a pivotal election and I don't think it's too early to talk about the importance of voting and supporting people's right to vote. We have one major political possible candidate or nominee who has talked about immigrants, including people like me and my family, who are poisoning the blood of this country. That is chilling and terrifying language. That should not be normalized at all. And I want us to put one foot in front of the other and to make a decision in 2024 about what kind of country we want to be. I have hope because I see all the people around me doing the hard work and I think hope is important for keeping a democracy alive and for making sure that people don't fall into apathy and despair. So that's it for me.
Thank you.
I will add to that. The use of the word vermin and talking about immigrants in large-scale detention centers, removal of various rights on day one, acting like a dictator. I could go on and on. So I echo those concerns and I hope we do what we can here to let the public know and be aware and have their rights expressed through voting. And other than that, I'll say happy holidays and safe travels for those who are coming in or going out.
First, I want to say how nice it was last. I'm losing track of my days. The, the employee recognition holiday lunch was a really very, very nice event. It was awesome to see the recognition of people who have served the, Mike, what was 25 years for you?
Whoa.
So he was right, Mike was right up there, but a number of people who've been with the city for a really long time. And so that was really nice in addition to just the mixing and mingling among all the different units. I know there was a party planning committee that made it really fun. And so it was really, really nice, but the people who provide our water, who make sure our sewage gets treated, the people who make sure, you know, our community is safe and our EMS and our community development people and people who make the IT work, it was really a nice event. Thank you for scheduling the retreat. I think that it's really formative. It's not like a big public thing, but a lot of big important decisions get made there. I guess what I would say is two things. I'm going to go into it, I have my own ideas, but we did just adopt a comprehensive plan that, that articulates what the people's priorities are. So I'm hoping our homework is, is we think about what we want, but we do it in relation and filter through and, and through what the people have said their priorities are. Cause that's what I feel like I'm a, I'm a vehicle for what the, for the public wants. And I'm presuming staff will be filtering their things through in that same way. You guys are thinking about 2024. I'm going to think about 2024 for a local thing. I've been, I don't, I, I don't think it's, I don't want to sound the alarm bells, but we're at a critical juncture with our anthrax and we received a letter. received a letter, I think we being city councilors, the Board of Trust, the Board of Education, the city manager, this president of Miami University, from Lee Fisher, who we know as being on our Oxford Parking Transportation Advisory Board. What he didn't say in his letter, he was a career Amtrak official. So he wrote to us, kind of recounting the history that's brought us to the place where we're almost ready to go at a particular site for which there was assurances that we, it would all work out. I don't want to read the letter, but for those of you guys, we received it. But just, he ends the letter by saying, in my opinion, if the property exchange issue is not resolved in 2024, Amtrak support will be withdrawn, and train service to him from Oxford will never happen in the foreseeable future. He says, our hope that, my hope is everyone who's hopping on this letter will put aside their personal differences and work to salvage a project that will be of tremendous benefit to the city of Oxford, citizens of Oxford, students at Miami University, as well as being another cornerstone of economic development for everyone in the immediate area. So, and he puts us, and he's addressing this to us. I mean, it's a we, it's us, Talawanda, Miami says, the choice is yours. I look forward to seeing all of you at a ribbon-cutting ceremony to celebrate a decade of hard work. Please don't be the entity to cause the ribbon-cutting not to take place, with a common refrain of we didn't have time to get around to it. So that was a little bit, you know, he's sounding the alarm also. I know that we've been working really hard on it, but some things are time-sensitive, and this is something we either resolve in quarter one or quarter two of 2024, or we, there will be consequences. So anyway, it's, 2020, 2024 is going to be a ride, all around. So everybody rest up, have happy holidays, enjoy your family, because, yeah, look at the calendar, next year in the United States of America is going to be one heck of a, of a year. So let's enjoy quiet days of, the remaining days of '23, and look back on all that we've accomplished this year, which is a ton. So, thank you.
Thank you. I want to share happy holiday wishes to everyone. I agree that there are a lot of tough issues coming up, and I think we're in good shape to handle them. I appreciate, I want to call out Jessica Green for dealing with our Amtrak issue on pretty much a daily basis. And it's just a very difficult one. It will not be, for lack of trying, if we are unsuccessful, but I remain optimistic, and we will have a work session to deal with that early in 2024. I want to take a moment to recognize the passing of one of our leading citizens, and that's Victoria Diker. Victoria was a, she worked in our prosecutor's office for many years. And so she served Butler County. She was active in the body politic of our county, and she was a patriot, and she was a fabulous mother and wife to Don Diker. And she will be missed. And I think it appropriate at times like this to recognize people like Victoria, and her service will be held tomorrow. Okay, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Meeting is adjourned.